Evening, everybody. This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 26. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scott. Okay, our first agenda item is open forum. I don't have anything for open forum, but Scott, I know that you do.
Right, so this morning was really great news. We opened up, we had the grand opening for the Roberta McGuire Senior Residences in Westford. This is a development, that's a piece of development that's off Carlisle Road. It will give us seven new affordable residence for seniors over the age of 65 with supportive services. It's a beautiful project. So thanks to Scott Clark for bringing it to us, to our planning department, for making it go smoothly, Council of Adrian, West Community Preservation Committee, Housing Authority, the CPC, you know, all of our funding kind of things came from. But a great townwide effort to honor a woman that was a great town employee for, sorry, a great town volunteer for for many years and in fact had a passion for for housing. So just great news this morning.
Well, that is, and can thank you to everybody who helps make this possible. And as Scott said, it's a fitting tribute to Roberta and her legacy. So anybody else have anything from open forum? I don't see anything, and I don't see anything from the audience. So our next item is a request for a public hearing to amend a license to store flammables. However, the applicant has requested that we postpone this until our May 10 meeting. So what, Jody?
As this is advertised, you probably should open the hearing and continue it to May 10.
So is there a motion to open this public hearing?
A move.
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And so, as I was saying, the applicant has asked that we continue this to our May 10 meeting. So why don't we continue this hearing to May 10 at 7:05?
A better version. So moved.
Second, what if, okay. All those in favor of continuing it till May 10 at 7:05? Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. So our next item is we have a request for a change of manager on a general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Inholder License for the Empire Regency Hospitality LLC, otherwise known as the Regency In- In-Conference Center here in Westford. And Mark Waxler, who appears to be with us tonight, is the proposed manager. Patty, is everything in order? Hello, Mr. Waxler.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
I am here, I'm sorry.
I muted me. Well, we
All is good with the application, sorry.
Great, thank you, and we certainly hear you now. Okay, so everything is in order. So is there a motion to approve the change of manager?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waxler, and good luck.
That was very quick. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. We try to be efficient. Okay, we are now at our consent agenda. And we have the following items on our consent agenda. A request to approve a music performance on Town Common and at the Town Common and Bandstand. The applicant is Alice Phelan on behalf of the Paris Center for the Arts. The date is Saturday, July 23, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, July 24. The time is from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have a request for a banner for the Knights Football Enrollment. The applicant is Mike Plate. The dates are from Saturday, May 7 to Tuesday, May 17, in front of the First Parish Church. We have a request for a banner for the Live for Live event. The applicant is Jody Marchand. The dates are Friday, July 15 to Monday, July 25, in front of the First Parish Church. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Thanks. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Moving right along, Scott?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but it occurs to me that in open forum, we failed to mention the fact that May 3 is election day.
Oh, we did, thank you.
We should be encouraging all the voters to get out there and vote on May 3 and pay attention to the precincts. If you're unsure, check the website as to where you might be voting this year.
Right, and there are only two voting places now, Stony Brook and the Academy. So everybody, you know, you can check online or we all got postcards too. So thanks for reminding us, Scott. Okay, and that's a perfect lead-in now to annual town meeting, which is scheduled for June 11 at 9:00 a.m. Outdoors on the Academy Field, but Academy Field. So tonight, we're starting to take positions on various warrant articles. So the first is Article 1, which is to authorize the use of electronic boat tabulators at town meeting. We had a presentation about this from Angela and the subcommittee, our town moderator Angela Harkness, and the Subcommittee of the Access to Town Meeting Committee a couple of weeks ago. So I'm not sure if there are other questions for Angela or if we're ready to take a position. See any questions? So is there a motion to recommend?
I will make a motion to recommend.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi, so it's unanimous. All right, Article 2, pardon, oh, sorry. Article 2, Article 2 is to accept town reports. Jody, do you know of any specific town reports or anybody who wants to report to the town meeting? Do you or Angela know of any?
No, this is basically to accept the annual report that is at the printers right now, so.
Right, I know that, but I just didn't know if that, sometimes we have some people who actually want to report, so, okay. Is there a motion to accept the town reports?
A move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Article 9, which is to amend the Wage and Classification Plan. Jody, do you want to walk us through this, please?
Sure, so this looks complicated, and it really isn't as complex as it looks, but I'll just start at the top. And all these went to the Personnel Advisory Committee, and they voted in favor of all of these changes. So in the Parks Recreation and Cemetery, we changed that to a Recreation Director from the three departments, and we reduced the band from a seven to a six. The Board of Health asked for the Director of Environmental Services to be renamed as Assistant Health Director, and they agreed to abandon five, and so that's what we're proposing. The next one is just a title change, Principal Assessor to Chief Assessor. As Principal Assessor, he was supposed to be a member of the Board of Assessors, and he and the board preferred to not make that mandatory, so that's a title change. The next one, we changed the Highway Superintendent to an Assistant DPW Director. There was no ban change, but it reflects the duties of the position. We're advertising for that now, subject to town meeting. The next one was part of the negotiations when I brought Parks and Grounds over to the DPW. The Highway Operations Supervisor became an Operations Manager Highway with the band of five. The Operations Manager Parks Ground, which was a union position, became a band five. So I have two of those positions that are equal in the department now. The Assistant Town Engineer, we felt was undergraded because he is a full engineer, and he was lower than the market basket. We couldn't bring him higher, so that was approved to go to a band six. The next Staff Engineer is the Stormwater Staff Engineer that the town did approve. We haven't hired it yet, and we established that as a band four. The Sustainability Coordinator is a new position that was funded by a grant, and we created that as a band four. And the Community Wellness Coordinator is also a new position that you funded with ARPA for a year and a half, and that was created as a band three. The next two were positions to be eliminated. We don't have these anymore. The Budget Director was Dan many moons ago, and the other one was an admin in my office that we discontinued. So we're just taking those off the Wage and Classification Plan.
Okay, any questions from anyone? John?
Jody, do these band numbers, do they include a pay raise for 2023? For FY 23?
The Board has put in a 2% COLA for 2023, so they would get a 2% COLA. But other than that, the formerly union position of Operations Manager did get a slight increase to assume the new responsibilities. And no one else received a raise for this change, these changes.
So these are the numbers that would be, and they're already in the budget?
Well, these are the bands, so this is the minimum to the maximum, but the budget does reflect the number. But the only person in here that did receive an increase was that one position who was promoted into a management position, so he had a slight increase.
Okay, thank you.
Which is in the budget and was part of the figures I showed you when I was negotiating those changes.
Any other questions? I don't see any. So is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Article 12, which is to appropriate Chapter 90 Local Transportation Funds for roadway maintenance. This is our annual allocation of Chapter 90 funds to help maintain our roads. So is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
All right.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Article 16, which is to authorize the Select Board to acquire easements for the Plain Road Sidewalk Project. Again, this is the sidewalk project that we previously approved, and it's for engineering to obtain any easements that they may need to install the sidewalks. So is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom? I saw you, you're nodding, Tom, I saw. Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
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 Okay. Article 17 is to accept General Law Chapter 90, Section 17(c), to allow the Select Board to establish speed limits. This was the article and the presentation that Chris Barrett made to the Board also a couple of weeks ago about establishing speed limits on several specific roads here in Westford. And I know we're early, so I don't see Chris Barrett on, if anybody has any questions. So let me ask if anybody has any questions, and if they do, then we can hold this for a little bit to see, and we can get Chris. But if nobody has any questions, we can take a vote on it now. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. So is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. And the last one for tonight is Article 18, which is to amend Chapters 51 and 22 of the general bylaws to reduce the number of Finance Committee books to be printed and discontinue mailing the Finance Committee book to households. Anita?
I emailed a question last night about the wording for that 10 days notice postcard, which is under Chapter 51, Number 2, where it says that they would, on that postcard, include the voter registration deadline. But Patty noted that it's actually 20 days before the meeting, so I just wanted to raise that discrepancy in timing.
Okay. So I I guess we have, yeah, the postcard needs to reflect what, you know, what the law requires us to do, so. It seems to me that voter registration will close before the postcard goes out, if I'm doing my math right.
Patty said it's 20 days, and that's the Massachusetts law.
Yeah. Yeah. Scott?
Yeah, this is a matter of protocol. We usually take positions on something after, on a frontist after FinCom, so to clarify, make sure that FinCom's already approved this on their own.
Well, I have Christina Green, and she has her hand up, so if we could unmute Christina, I bet she can answer your question, Scott.
Hi, thanks, Andrea.
Hi.
So a couple of things. One, we have not taken a final position on whether to recommend this or not. I believe it's on our May 5 agenda. FinCom did vote to put it on the warrant, but we haven't voted on the final wording. The other comment that I wanted to make was that the postcard going out 10 days in advance is actually the exact same timing for Special Town Meeting. And Special Town Meeting also has the same 20 days for voter registration. So we have that discrepancy for both Special Town Meeting and Annual Town Meeting. And I just became aware of this today, so I'm not entirely sure what we should do about that. I think we need to figure something out. My hesitation with sending out the postcard 20 days ahead of time is that we're not going to have the book ready, and this postcard is supposed to tell people where to go get the book. So we've got a chicken and egg situation here. And the voters, I'll just add one more thing, the voter registration deadline, like I said, is on the postcard that gets sent out at Special Town Meeting, so we were just mirroring and doing the same thing. League of Women Voters asked for that as well.
Okay, so clearly, we do have to clear up that discrepancy. Jody?
Yeah, so I've been putting out that postcard for 14 years, and I'm not recalling that it says that I need to send the voter registration deadline in that, but my recollection is it is printed on it. So I'd have to look at the bylaw to see if it says that too. But I agree that 20 days is too far in advance. We won't have the information. So maybe it's just we don't include the voter registration deadline, if that's the hangup there. But anyway, I'm going to check tomorrow on that, but we've been sending that out all my years here, and no one's ever brought that up till today, so.
Okay, John?
I don't have anything on it. Well, I was going to ask, you know, how many copies will we plan on printing if we are not sending it to everybody? And then what's the total savings that we're going to have by going this way?
I don't know if either Christina or Jody can answer that question.
I can.
Okay, great.
Well, I don't know the exact number of FinCom books that will be printed. I think the plan was to have some at the various locations and then print more as needed. You know, if people picked them all up, we put out more. And when in talking to Dan, we estimated the savings at about $2,500. It's not really about the money in this sense. It's really more about all the paper, sending out all those books. And this also gives the Finance Committee a little more time to work on the book because we don't have to get it to the printer, I forget how many days in advance, and so we have that advantage as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think it makes sense for us to wait to take a position on this, the way we usually do until Christina, the FinCom does. So I would suggest we hold this one until our May 10 meeting, which will be after, when FinCom has taken a position on it, Christina. And also will give us time to work out the wording of the postcard and the discrepancy between the card itself and the voter registration.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. All right. And with that, Angela has her hand up.
Andrea, I heard you take a position on Article 16. Did you also take a position on Article 15, which is on my agenda?
Yes, we voted
On both, on both of those?
Yep, we voted unanimously to recommend both.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry.
No problem. Okay. All right, with that, we can move on to our 7:40 p.m. item, which is a continuation of ARPA funding requests to determine further allocations. So I do believe tonight, Jody is going to go through these and run through these with us, along with anybody else who may be online to talk about these various proposals. So starting with the Cameron Senior Center HVAC system. Jody, is that you? I know Jennifer Claro's on. I don't know if there's anybody else.
Sure, yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I, just to let you know, I think it's on the agenda. We do have in your pocket the project of approved to date, the funding spent, I won't go through it, and the funding available right now, that is $1,206,124.42. So that's what you have, that you can spend tonight. So if we start with the project requests, we have the Cameron Senior Center HVAC system, which was requested by facilities and also a resident. We just got the final figures on that yesterday, and so the amount is actually 1.6 million. We did have a placeholder under capital for a million. This would represent an increase in funding, which if the town approved this, would cost us an additional $42,000 a year in our bonding, which we hadn't anticipated. So we are seeing whether you have an appetite to put some ARPA funding towards this project.
John?
What happens if we don't? What's the plan? This thing's at 1.6 million, and we haven't really decided on which way we're going to go on it. And so I'm a little wary of putting the $1.6 million on this right now.
Well, so as I said, we do have a $1 million placeholder in capital, and Paul Fox was able to get the final numbers last night or the night before. So I have $71,000 in the budget to pay this over the next 21 years. If it is approved at 1.6, I would have to add 42.6 to that, or it would be 1,1360. So that just means that I would have 42,600 less in the budget to fund other things with next year. We did go to capital today, and capital, although they didn't vote, they did not disagree with what was presented to them. And they do know that you are talking about it tonight. So if you don't decide to put any ARPA funds towards it, we will take it to town meeting as a 1.6. And we are working with Amoresco, which is the Energy Performance Contract vendor that we have, and they are proposing an energy-efficient system that is basically converting from gas to electricity with a boiler backup system that already exists. And they are expecting us to reduce our energy costs by three times. And Amoresco would be on the hook if that doesn't happen to reimburse us the difference.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I don't know if Paul is on tonight or not, but
He is.
Okay, so he can speak to, so, but there were three options given to the current town building committee last night, and we did arrive at an option to John's question about multiple options that has been decided upon by the PTBC. I know Paul went from that meeting to the Clean Energy Committee, so he can speak to whether they agreed or not. But this is, it's an excellent option, that Paul did a great job describing last night why we should go for it, what it buys us, and I won't give you the half-hour presentation he gave, but it was, it's to me, it's a no-brainer that we want that third choice, and that was the decision of the town building committee.
Okay, thank you. Anita?
Yeah, you know, I know that I was one of the folks that was interested in reviewing the HVAC for the Senior Center tonight, and I am still, I know this is a top priority for most of the members here, all the members of the board. But it does feel like a little bit still kind of in flux. I thought it was a little bit more final than what it was because it seemed to just jump $600,000 overnight, at least for us. And so I would like to put some ARPA money towards it. I guess I'm not clear on what that number should be, and if that we should be really deciding on tonight if we're still unsure which option we're going with.
Tom?
Yeah, I think I had a similar question, which is what exactly are we asking for? Are we asking for $42,000 for the first year of bonding, or are we asking $600 to close the gap? And then just to Jody, just to clarify, this seems like a natural project to go through capital. It sounds like it did go through capital, but the amount increased. And so the reason it's urgent and appropriate for ARPA funding, it sounds like the argument is, is that if we don't make this additional change, then we're basically shortchanging some other pot of money that's already been agreed to. Is that why we need to do this now and why this is an appropriate ARPA fund?
Jody, you want to answer that?
Yeah, so I think what happened is that Paul has been working on for a year or a year, and the number would be, so he put in a placeholder of $1 million, not knowing. And so he finally got the numbers through the different contractors who are helping with this, and we realize it's late, and we apologize for that. But I think it is something we want to move forward with. So ARPA is supposed to be used for many things, including one-time, you know, capital purchases. And obviously, this is one of those. This is also a backup shelter for the town, so we think it's critical. And if you are willing to throw some funding at it, you could decide what that would be. $42,000 would help us through one year, but, you know, $500,000 would help us through 20 years. So, but it's really up to the board what your appetite is. We'd like to get going on this, and it's just a request for you to consider. And if you're willing to throw something at it, then we will take that.
Scott, is your hand still up?
Yeah, I was just saying, yeah. Yeah, Paul put a lot of thought into this. I know that it's a number that has fluctuated, but I was very impressed last night with the work that he has done. And Tom Teller from the Clean Energy Committee, Chris Kapinski from Town Building Committee, it's been a lot of thought, and that higher number actually, you know, a billion dollars buys you kind of what we have now, which is not gonna get us anywhere near efficiency goals, and in fact, doesn't really, you know, buy us a lot, whereas the, the higher number buys a much better system, much more flexible, and, you know, more in keeping with our, our stated goals for energy and sustainability. So, I mean, Paul can tell me if I'm wrong here, but I didn't wanna congratulate those guys because a lot of research, it is closer to, you know, fixed cost with construction cost what they are. Nothing is guaranteed, has around numbers of 1.6, but I would support using, another thing I mentioned is this, you know, ventilation is clearly part of any kind of pandemic control. And so not only is this sort of need for this to be done anyway, it's an emergency shelter, it's also our most vulnerable citizens from a health perspective. And I think it makes sense. I would make a motion to.
Hang on a minute, before you make a motion, I think it would be important for Paul to, to just describe for us what, why it's 1.6 million and why he's recommending the option that he is recommending. I think that's important for all of us to understand and also for folks who are watching at home. So if you would hold your motion for a moment, Scott, and let Paul speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the select board for providing me with this opportunity here. Scott already alluded to a lot of the key details, so I'll try to be brief and succinct. But ultimately, when we embarked on this challenge, we were trying to identify what the most appropriate project would be. But we're also trying to take the perspective of both Permanent Town Building Committee ideals, as well as the new Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. So as mentioned, we had great representation throughout this whole project with really no mindset for exactly what the outcome was gonna be. We let the design work and the engineer work tell us and dictate to us what the ideal system would be in place. So again, that million dollars was really just designed as a placeholder, knowing that just to replace the system as a baseline option was basically gonna take us somewhere in that million dollar range. We didn't know how much further we were ultimately gonna exceed that number until last night. So we proposed one of three options. One was a baseline, one was an intermediate that really didn't pan out to enough benefits, and it was gonna cost slightly less than what the best proposed object is there, or solution is there. And what that best proposed solution is getting us is just a fantastic four-pipe system that is also gonna be supplement, have the ability to do humidify any area, as well as provide both cooling and heating to any area at any given time. It won't be seasonal dependent like so many of our buildings, which operate with a changeover cycle example, only running either hot water or cold water through the building. And then additionally, there is some extra redundancy in there. We are trying to salvage the boiler system whenever possible during the coldest parts of the winter to try to reduce operational costs. And so that boiler system that is in place now will be existing for about another 15 to 20 years. We're gonna greatly extend the life of it there. I'm happy to get into further details from the mechanical component, but I don't necessarily want to if no one's specifically interested, but it has tremendous amounts of benefits compared to that just of the baseline. And also, as mentioned, it is gonna be a fully electric system, which is truly in line with the, you know, net zero carbon neutrality initiative, as Jody alluded to already. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. John, do you still have your hand up?
No, I'm just.
Oh, okay, pondering?
Pondering, yes.
Okay. So, you know, I guess for me, the question is, I fully support the option that Paul is recommending, particularly from the clean energy and sustainability perspective, and what it gains for our town. I think over the, if you look at it from a lifetime perspective, we will, you know, we will gain back the initial investment. The question for me is sort of, you know, do we, you know, we can't fund this completely 1.6 million dollars out of ARPA because we don't have that, so that's, that's easy, but is there a portion of this that we fund out of ARPA and split it between capital and ARPA? So that we do save, you know, some funding for, from capital that'll be available for the town in future budgets? You know, I don't, I don't know exactly what that number is. To be honest, I, I, you know, in my head, you know, arbitrarily picked, you know, half a million dollars, which then still leaves 1.1 million dollars in capital, which is only $100,000 above what they had sort of put in as a placeholder. But again, I'm open to talk about that. It's really an arbitrary number that I just kind of pulled out of my head, to be honest with folks. So Scott?
Well, great minds run the same channel, because my motion was gonna be to approve.
We didn't talk, wait, folks need to know.
But to request 500,000 of ARPA money for this project, but again, it's just a round number. It's not based upon any science, but it seemed that the number to pick is to preserve a good amount of money for other purposes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any other comments?
So the motion is for 500,000?
From ARPA funding, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Not seeing any other comments. All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great, Paul and everybody, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next one, oh, sorry, you want me to go through?
Yep, go ahead.
The next request is for the 51 Main Street Sustainability and Energy Efficiency Proposal that you did support with the Permanent Town Building Committee at your last meeting, so they're requesting 92,000 so they can get going on that and not have to wait until town meeting.
Any questions? Is there a mo, Scott?
Yeah, we told them to go do it, we should pay for it, so to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
So the next request was the assessors are looking for vehicles so they don't have to use their private vehicles to go on their inspections. So they suggested an all-electric, and we can get a grant to offset a huge chunk of that, which I think we already have gotten, or maybe that's for the police. So the amount would be 22,501. And Will is here if you have any questions on that.
Do we have questions? John?
I don't see where this fits into ARPA. I understand security, you know, safety, but I don't, you know, 1,500 miles a year, was it? That the assessor uses? And then he gets paid for mileage, which I don't know how much that is, but it does come up to 22,000. And this one assumes that 7,500 dollar grant, and the police vehicle is following is assuming for the same 7,500 dollar grant, as far as I understand it. And under ARPA, there are provisions for us to use funds for police vehicles. And it doesn't mention anything like assessors' vehicles. It's really public safety. So I'm looking at the two of those combined, and I do not agree on the assessor's vehicle with the numbers I see. And so that's my position on it.
Okay. Jody?
So I just wanted to clarify that the grants are available for every electric vehicle we purchase, so it would apply to both. And really, you know, we didn't put parameters on requests, so people can request whatever they're looking for, and that's up to you to decide whether or not you want to allocate funding for it. So this would be a capital, which I think in our feeling that it would be an appropriate request, but whether or not you decide to fund it, it's certainly up to you.
I respectfully disagree as far as that 7,500 dollars, because I saw that letter that had 7,500 dollars for an electrical vehicle, and I think that was the same one for each of those, so, but no, I think, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Eric is in the background.
Yeah, Eric's in the background. If you wanna ask him, I believe it is per vehicle, so there he is.
I, so yeah, it's a grant through Mass EVIP, so for a battery electric vehicle, it's 7,500 dollars, so the one that was already approved by them was for this vehicle specifically for the assessors department. We have submitted the one for the police department vehicle. We just haven't received the approval quite yet.
Okay. John, did you have, I know you got interrupted. Did you have something else to say?
No, I don't think so.
Other comments? Tom, and then I have a question for Will, but go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was just interested in Will's take on this, so just if he's gonna make his argument how this benefits the public good, just I'd like to hear how he's thinking about it.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Thank you, board members. Thanks for having me tonight. Yeah, so I've worked in, in five different communities in Massachusetts. And it's a little scattered in terms of who gets a vehicle to use and using your own vehicle. And we do, we do a lot of inspections, and we're using our own vehicles to do that. Granted, we're reimbursed for mileage. And I believe it's about 58 cents per mile, 60 cents, something like that. And I think that's fine. We'll continue to do that if this doesn't happen. However, the other part of it is, I believe I asked Eric or other people, and I don't think we put in those brand-new electric charging stations, and I don't see one town vehicle being charged there. So I don't believe the town owns an electric vehicle. I said, we're kind of putting our money where our mouth is and stepping up here and trying to do the right thing and create a a green environment, and I just think it's a good idea, and I thought this was a good use, it fits in with, with the theme, so that's, that's all. And again, if it doesn't occur, it doesn't happen, we'll continue to do that. I just, I think it's nice that a lot of the departments have vehicles, but are, but we don't, and I thought this was kind of, this would fit right in, so thank you.
Okay. Tom, Scott, and then it looks like John has another question or a comment, so.
Yeah, I'm a... So it makes sense to me, even if this is a relatively low mileage usage, that if we're trying to make a move towards, I mean, as we are, we are making a move towards net zero. I think this is an appropriate use. I think these vehicles can be very reliable and have a very long life. I think it will have some cost offset with regard to the mileage, and I think it's just a more consistent message for us. It's a high-visibility vehicle that's driving around the town. It's the perfect kind of thing for an electric vehicle, because it's all short-distance start-stop stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm feeling like this would be an appropriate use and would be in support.
Scott?
So a couple things. First, you know, I apologize for my parents. I did ask, I did ask Jody, you know, if we had any other vehicles. Sometimes we have hemmy downs, you know, we have a police cruiser or other town vehicle that has been in high priority use and is now available for less stressful use like this. And there are not any, so this is all, there's no option to say, well, there's an existing car we can use. And secondly, I think there's, there's a question about the payback. So if it's a slow mileage actually being used now, and we were to purchase this car, do we really save any money? It sounds like the answer is no. On the other hand, I've got great respect for our capital committee's approach to doing things. So if capital believes it's necessary, I believe the homework is there to say it is necessary. So I guess if I just confirm with Jody that capital would approve it. If we don't, that to me says that maybe we should.
Jody?
Okay, I have, I have no idea. This has not been to capital, so I don't wanna speak for capital.
Okay, I was just waiting a little bit on this one, and not saying no, but I'll say yes.
I think that's a possibility and one I was gonna suggest, but John?
Well, my only comment is I think we have some other low-mileage vehicles in the town that could be shared for this particular effort. I do understand not wanting to use your personal vehicle, because that 58 cents a mile doesn't really do somebody fair with wear and tear. My other question was, or other opinion was, it just didn't belong in ARPA. I mean, we, I'd like to get into that vehicle, but just not with ARPA funds.
So, oh, go ahead, Anita.
You know, I was kind of torn on, torn on this, because I think part of it is just that we know that you do excellent work, Will, and so I feel like the guilt of, of that. Just know you're, you're doing a really great job. But I think the others have made a good point about maybe waiting on this or having it go through capital before it comes here, being considered for ARPA. But in no way does that mean we don't appreciate all the work you're doing.
Understood.
Yeah, I think, I think my feeling is, is certainly, I mean, I, you know, I certainly appreciate the clean energy aspect and the sustainability aspect, Tom, that you've, you've raised, and I think it's, you know, anything that we can do, I think is really important. But I would like to wait and a little bit longer to see, you know, where we are at the end of tonight in terms of spending and what other requests are still out there that people might want us to consider before we make a decision on this. So I guess I would agree with Anita and Scott that we, we hold on this and defer. We're, we're not gonna say, we're not saying no, we're not saying yes right now, but that we just put this, put this on the to-be-determined list. Does other, other members okay with that? Just kind of nod, yes?
Yes.
Okay, Jody?
And I just add, we did check with other departments, and no one had a vehicle to share with Will. But we will take it to capital or whatever you all decide, and I just wanna commend Will on being creative with his request, because, you know, I mean, I think you were creative with it, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Eric, too, because Eric helped me out, too, so I appreciate that. Thank you all tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Will, and we will be back with you, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Next, Jody.
Okay, so the next one was the police had put in a request for an electric vehicle to help with their traffic operations. And Eric, just for clarification, does 57895 include the grant? I think it does.
I do believe you are correct. This one, as I mentioned, we should be getting the 7,500 dollar approval. We are allowed up to 25 of those grants of this type, so that should be fine.
And Ron Palascus is here if you have questions about this request.
John, I saw you put your hand up.
Oh, could you kind of tell me how this is gonna work with the electric vehicle, the use of it? And then another question would be, why not a hybrid? What did the hybrids cost? It would be a fully usable patrol car cost versus this one especially for traffic and being a Mustang?
Ron, if you would like to answer that, and Eric will unmute you.
John, I'm sorry, you cut out. Can you say that again?
That's probably good. I got cut out. No, anyway, two things. First, I'd like to kind of describe how this operation is gonna go, because you're gonna have to plug this thing in nightly, daily. Where's it gonna be positioned when it's plugged in? And then just how that And then uh, just how that feathers in with the operational use. And then the other one was uh, why not a hybrid uh, fully uh, outfitted patrol car um, that would be very flexible and could be used just anytime uh, and anywhere.
The uh, plan going forward would be to plug it in at the um, the the power stations that are stationed at the town hall right now. We'd only be having two officers that use it. We have two officers assigned to the uh, traffic unit. So whenever they are not working, we'd have it plugged in at the uh, like I said, the power stations at the town hall. And as far as it being um, incorporated, this vehicle, the uh, the Mach-E, the Mustang Mach-E was just, is the first electrical vehicle to be with Michigan pursuit, Michigan State Police pursuit rated. It doesn't have, it wouldn't fit in for the patrol function yet because it does not have a uh, a prisoner transport cage. So that's one of the safety concerns, like where the um, traffic guys generally don't do true prisoner transport. A typical patrol vehicle that we use all the time is required to have a prisoner transport cage.
Okay.
Anita?
Yeah, um, this was also one of the other um, requests that I was kind of um, wavering on because I, there was this really great email that um, the chief had included in our packet where like your maintenance budget is okay, and you have your higher mileage vehicles become your administrative ones, right? So this, this electric vehicle would kind of be in the line with all these other sort of um, lower uh, mile, you know, lower usage administrative vehicles. But I feel like what your need is really is back up to like those that would um, be accruing higher mileage. So knowing that it's not urgent, it's hard for me to support it for right now for ARPA because I feel like what your need is is really those cars that um, that you just can't get right now in terms of electric. Um, you know, that those don't qualify or meet, meet whatever your needs are for like those higher, higher speeds or power. So I'm not totally, I'm not ready to support that tonight. But it doesn't mean I don't support police. Thank you for everything you do.
Scott?
Actually, there's a other question for the, I guess, the deputy. So I'm thinking of, you know, uh, most of our patrol cars, screen patrol cars, uh, which is not the best in the world for speed control. So is the Mustang, is that going to be more of a, a uh, normal car appearance? Or is that going to have the, the, the classic, you know, lights and so forth of a, of a police cruiser?
And the plan was to have it be, look like the classic police cruiser, all marked up.
I mean, I I guess I'll just add it, you know, as part of the pedestrian safety uh, committee, um, you know, what we hear every day, all day is more traffic enforcement. So, you know, to me, a vehicle geared for that is um, in keeping with the town needs.
John?
Yeah, I do think this is an appropriate use of ARPA funds according to uh, the latest rule, the one that went into effect, the file on the first of uh, April. So it is appropriate use of ARPA funds. The question is, is that where we want to put it? That's all. I think I would err in the chief's favor, uh, if I was going to go one way or the other because he's done the research. He says he needs this for traffic control, especially on those twenty five mile an hour streets that we're going to be uh, putting in. So I think I would be for this on uh, vote for it.
And Tom?
Um, just uh, echoing John, I guess, and being in support of this, I think uh, if it lets us retire another older vehicle out of service, and if it pursues our climate goals to town, I think it also sends an important message. Uh, again, another highly visible vehicle. Um, hopefully it'll be visible as being electric. So uh, I'm in support.
And and I'm in support of this as well. Um, again, um, as we move towards, you know, uh, electric vehicles, uh, incorporating them uh, across the town. And I think uh, particularly for, you know, our police and our, for our patrol, um, for our traffic unit, um, that this is a valuable purchase. That will in the, at the end of the day, uh, pay off and pay for itself. So um, uh, this one, I, I do support this one. So uh, is there a motion?
I make a motion to support.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
No, but I don't want people to think I'm not, totally support police, okay?
Got it. We'll put an asterisk next to Anita's no vote, but she does support, actions taken, but Anita does support police, okay?
Okay, Anita, it's duly noted.
John?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Thank you, deputy.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, um, next, Jody.
Uh, yes, so let's see. I was trying to do spend. Okay, so the next request is for the schools, the next four from the schools, and it was for fiscal year twenty two substitute.
Wait, Jody.
Substitute daily and my collection is
Jody.
Oops, I'm sorry, I did. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. So we had a request for employee hazard pay or premium pay by the police, public safety dispatchers, and the Westford Public Works Association.
Okay, um, so uh, the select board um, met uh, in executive session to discuss this prior to this meeting. And to consider um, these requests um, from these three different um, groups of folks. Um, and um, at its meeting, um, you know, the, the select board um, fully considered and discussed uh, not only um, uh, what the town could afford to do, what we can do. We also have looked at what other communities have done around us. Um, and um, taken, took all of that into consideration in um, uh, coming to a decision during our um, executive session. Um, we also um, have a statement um, that um, I'm going to read, um, that reflects the board's uh, position. And so, um, reading that statement that reflects our position. The select board received requests for consideration of using ARPA funds to allocate premium pay to certain town employees for their efforts during the pandemic. First and foremost, the select board want to acknowledge and thank all town and school employees for their efforts during the months when we were all learning about COVID nineteen and steps to take to protect ourselves and our loved ones. Although our first responders and many other employees were not able to work remotely or did not choose to, all employees made sacrifices and took risks to continue to provide excellent service to our residents. Accommodations were made to help protect our employees. And to the best of our knowledge, in those early days of COVID, none of our town employees contracted COVID through their jobs. As you all know, there have been many requests for ARPA funds from a variety of groups, and the select board has tried to prioritize and support the many different requests. We feel if we provided premium pay, it would need to be for all of our town and school employees, not just certain groups. Therefore, in lieu of premium pay, we want to recognize and thank each of our town employees again for rising to the challenges that were presented to them and that continue to be presented to them by granting our town employees a compensatory day off as a gesture of our appreciation. And if the board agrees to do so, we will appropriate ARPA funding to fund that compensatory day off. So with that statement, um, is there a motion from the board to um, uh, appropriate the necessary ARPA funds um, to fund a compensatory day off uh, for all of our town employees?
Removed.
Is there a second? Okay, um, any comments, uh, any further comments or questions from the board? From the audience? I don't see any. Oops, I do. Wait a minute. Valerie Young is asking, can you clarify if that applies to school employees? Um, no, Valerie, because the select board doesn't have any um, control or say over the uh, uh, employment of school employees. So that's something that, you know, we, we leave to the schools to decide. So it's simply for employees on the uh, who are employed by the town of Westford on the town side. Okay, with that, um, uh, all those in favor? Um, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Um, and for the town employees for their compensatory day off, um, uh, there is uh, no mandate uh, in terms of, you know, how or when you have to take that off. You need to work it out, obviously, with your department heads to, to make sure there is appropriate coverage. Um, so uh, with that, I don't know, Jody, if if you have anything else to add to that in terms of uh, days off?
Uh, no, we, we, we can send out a directive, but um, if you could vote to support that with twenty one thousand oh fifty nine from ARPA, then um, that would list us. Thank you. Okay.
Second? Um, all those in favor? Um, Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so thank you. Um, all right. So now we're getting into the school requests. And the first one on the list is fiscal year twenty two substitute daily rate increase. And my understanding is the schools did raise the rate, I believe it was in November. And so they're looking for reimbursement into their budget for this uh, purpose. They're labeling this a high priority. And they're looking for sixty seven thousand and seventy dollars.
Um, do we want to do all of them? And then we can, just so we can have all of them in a package and see what, what the schools are requesting in total, Jody?
Sure. So the next one was for uh, safety. Let's see. Yeah, this is safety care training. They're requesting ten thousand eight eighty. And um, this would fully certify an additional ten staff to support existing teams and build capacity and provide support in each school. This was listed as a high priority. And I think I already mentioned ten thousand eight eighty. The next one is restorative practices, training and coaching. And the request is for seventy five thousand. And I, there was a long explanation that I, I don't think I'll read. And Chris is here if you have more questions on that. And then the last one for review today is the design plan for the NavNasit walkway and car path, fifty thousand three eighty five. And that was for safety issues in the parking lot.
Questions or comments from the board? Um, I, I do have a question um, about the substitute on teachers. Um, so I understand the request is to um, reimburse you for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. Uh, funding for the substitutes. Is the increased pay for substitutes in FY twenty three in your budget um, going forward? So this is just a one-time uh, funding request? Am I, am I correct about that? Um, Chris?
Yeah, so we, so we had temporarily raised the subpay from eighty to a hundred dollars in order to try to grow the pool. Moving forward in FY twenty three, we've actually budgeted for the increase to go to ninety. And that is in our budget, and we've budgeted for that. Um, I, I do feel like, I know you just asked me one question. I do feel like, can I just make a comment about the previous conversation you guys just had quickly? I, I appreciate the comment that you, that you read. Uh, I appreciate the fact that you included the schools in that uh, in that conversation about appreciating all the work that everybody did. I think it's important for me to just say right now, too, that in hearing the decision that you just made, the schools will, will now review that and will look at that. So I appreciate Andrea that you said that you don't oversee school employees, but we do always talk in terms of everybody being town employees. So I wanted just to be clear to all of the school employees who might be listening tonight that this is new information. And so we'll look at it and we'll look to see what would that, what would that look like financially? And that might then, it, that might then result in an, in an ARPA request that we have similar to what you had just done or something to that effect. But um, it's just, I just wanted to say that for anybody who was listening that, that I appreciate that you guys took that on tonight and you were dealing with a very specific request. Because we do, we do value everybody, uh, I think, and the, and the contributions that they made that, that we'll, we'll consider what does that look like for the schools?
Great. And if, if it's something that, you know, you want to do and, and there's a work, you know, um, you have a request, obviously, you know how to, you know how to submit it. So, um,
Yeah, the comp, the complicated factor is that with, with the majority of our positions, if someone has a day off, it requires somebody else to do that position, which is a little bit different. And so that's, I think there's, that's why I think people just kind of need to understand that.
It is different um, uh, from our perspective. And, and, and I don't know, Chris, there may be other creative things that you can do for your employees that we're not able to do for, you know, the employees on the town side. But um, I, I do think that the point you make is, is really the, the key one, which is everybody who worked during COVID, you know, stepped up, met the challenges, and all of us, you know, who are elected officials and uh, here in, in town, um, and yourself and Jody and, and uh, those staff people all appreciate um, and are so very grateful for what everybody has done over the last, you know, almost three years now. So I think that's, that's the key takeaway. Um, so thank you uh, for that. Um, so um, with that, um, Anita?
Yeah, um, so kind of related to that. So I am in support of the substitute daily rate increase. And I know it's been really hard to get substitute teachers um, in the door. And I'm also in support of the safety care training and the design plan for NavNasit. I have some reservations, though, about the restorative practices and training and coaching. I've spoken to a handful of families, probably not as many as you or the school committee have spoken to, but um, they're included, including like families who have children at WA all the way down to Keta two. And there are families of color, parents of color, and they have not been completely enamored really by the restorative justice process so far. I think it's not, um, it's not done yet. It's not complete. I saw, I was watching the school committee meeting last night to hear the update on the restorative practices piece. And I heard you all say that, you know, you want to do some sort of um, sort of feedback loop or some sort of um, summary or review of the process kind of at the end. And so through that, I heard, you know, I heard that it's not done yet. And so for us to kind of commit to restorative practices and training when I've only heard um, not positive feedback or people who are still trying to understand it and can't quite wrap their head around it. And then that coupled with this sort of, the process that you're still sort of in the middle of, I don't feel comfortable supporting that line item tonight. And, but I am in support of the other items.
I, I appreciate that, Anita. And because you're right, we did talk about the fact that we plan to debrief later in the spring. And while I, I do believe that the restorative practices and what we've put in as a request is really, is, is to try to go through the, a three-year process of trying to grow the uh, the capacity within the district. I think your point is, is well taken. And that, it's also something that we could look at later, too. Well, um, a, and it's not, it doesn't have the same ti- the, the most time sensitive really is the, is the, the, the substitute pay because it impacts FY twenty two and really trying to move forward with doing whatever we can to get some ideas as to how we might be able to fix the, the, the traffic scenario around NavNasit are really the most too pressing at this moment because the safety care is also something that we, we want to get moving on. But that is something that the training itself wouldn't take place until the fall. So um, so that, just for, as far as priorities go.
Great, thanks. Scott?
So I guess the easy one first. I mean, to me, the, the NavNasit improvements is uh, to me, a, a clearly yes. We've um, as a town invested in sidewalks around Nav and plumbing those sidewalks. It makes no sense to invest in safety to get to school, not have a safe environment at the school. So I think we do want to take that on. You know, the ten thousand change for the um, uh, the, so safety training, I think, makes, makes some sense. It'd be something in, in immediate need, but it clearly is tied to um, I think your behavioral concerns that have risen from, you know, COVID and uh, concerns that have risen from, you know, COVID and uh lack of social skill development, I suspect, for, you know, a year and a half or two years. Um, yeah, I'm I'm I guess my bigger problem is is with the um substitute teachers, I I guess, you know, the 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 schools have their sort of version of of ARPA, which is, which is ASRA. Um, and, you know, for various good reasons, they've allocated that to kindergarten, but it seems to me that um, that's a a kind of a salary concern that maybe isn't really ARPA-related, it's more of a, I mean, we still got a tight budget because of a tight economy. Um, substitute teachers aren't hard to find now because of COVID, it's so hard to find because the market's tight, and that to me is more of a, just a generic budget problem than it is a, a uh, you know, pandemic problem.
Anita, do you hell have a comment or did you just not, oh, taking your?
Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry to go back to restorative practices for a second, I meant, I meant to comment um or, you know, respond to Chris Chu's piece. And um the part around um the criticisms, I think, of restorative justice, so I went through like a rabbit hole over the weekend, um looking into restorative justice peer review articles. And some, one of the things that I read was that, you know, you need the full community engagement piece, which I feel like we just haven't had time to do that. So like the resentment or the hesitation that people might feel around restorative justice is because that part hasn't been thoroughly exercised. And so I think a lot of the criticisms that either I feel or that I hear from like members of our D E I community still are in that pe- that period that I think if there was more education where there's still more time for that, then then that could be rectified. Um, so I just wanted to respond to your comment. I'm back then.
Um, Tom, and then John?
Um, I guess it's just a request to to Dr. Chu and the school committee, uh as the restorative justice piece um is further developed and greater community engagement involvement. Uh, I hope that comes back because that's such an important and critical need for all of us. And uh if we have the time to be more inclusive in developing it and be a little bit more specific, I think I would agree with Anita, it makes sense to take the time. But uh, I just, my own personal feeling is that that's something that we obviously have demonstrated need for in Westford and uh and and I want that work to be happening. So uh if we decide tonight to to give more time to develop that idea and be more inclusive, great, but I do want to see that come back. And I guess a question for Dr. Chu, I do wonder if if COVID did drive an increased demand for substitute teachers. Um, it it, and also, I guess, I just, in my own mind, I feel like I would want to be in support of that, in support of that, because it was a move the schools already felt they needed to take and have already taken. Uh, and there's a fixed end to it. So I, maybe just a question, though, to Dr. Chu, which is um was part of the COVID experience and increased demand for substitutes?
It absolutely was, and and it was a, it was an early demand and the pool was almost non-existent. And by changing our rate, we did increase the pool, which then did help us meet the needs, especially when we, we we never had to. Fortunately, we didn't have to close schools because we weren't able to staff them as other um districts did have to do at times. And it was partially because we were ultimately, especially when we hit January, we were able to have enough people um that we were able to bring in. And so that, that number is both the, the, the the actual number of cost to date of just the increase, right? So it wasn't the full, it wasn't the full hundred dollars per person, it was just the increased amount from the eighty to hundred because we had already budgeted for the, for the eighty amount. And then with the projection that it would take us through the, through the rest of the school year, and that's uh the way that uh Pat Lanhart had had come up with that number specifically. And it's just covering the increase, not the, not the typical eighty dollar rate.
Great, thank you. John?
Yeah, I I support the uh uh substitute daily rate increase because I think that was uh a result of the the virus and the pandemic. Um, and the safety care training, the same. Um, design plan for NavNasit walkway and car path that I agree with. I think we could hold off on restorative practices, training until we learn more about it, because it's kind of, it's not really clear what that actually entails. And uh it it appears that uh it's not right, it's just the right time to do it yet. So.
Um, there is a question um from Christina Green. Um, and um she's asking, um, will the design plan for NavNasit result in construction costs? And if so, should this come to capital first? I don't know who can answer that.
I will say, and well, and if Paul is still with us, Paul Fox has has done a wonderful job kind of helping with this, our our goal here was to try to take this off of the shoulders of of some of our, of of some of our town groups. But the the plan is, is that if we have this money for the design, yes, then it will go to capital for any any, any of the actual project would have to go through capital. And so that was, that was our intent.
Okay, thanks. So I think what I'm hearing from the board is that um I'm hearing support for the uh increases uh the substitute daily rate increase for FY twenty two, safety care training and the design plan for NavNasit walkway and car paths, but um a desire to uh hold on the request for restorative practices and training um to allow a little bit more time for that to play out here in the community for you uh uh and the school committee um to to do a little bit more work on that uh on this uh and to follow up on it. So um, I I think that's what I'm hearing from from the board. Um, so um if there is a motion from the board?
Um, can I move the motion as you just described it? Do you want me to restate it? Okay.
No, you can move it.
I move to approve the the three requests uh as uh as Andrea's described, and uh to request to not vote on uh on the restorative practices tonight, but encourage the school committee to please come back when that's a little bit further developed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott? Scott saying I.
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
And I'm an I. And I guess, you know, I'll just uh reiterate, you know, sort of what we also said about uh the electric uh vehicle for the assessors. Um, please, it's not that we're saying no, um, come back uh to us when you know, you feel like you have more information and it's further developed and, you know, we're more than happy to to consider the request and we'll just put it on our, you know, to be determined at a later date list.
Thank you, I I appreciate it, I appreciate you taking them up tonight.
Okay, thank you all, and uh thank you for your work and have a good night.
You too.
Um, and Jody, there is one more.
Yes, so the last one is a collaborative request from the Council on Aging, Recreation and Health Department. And it's to provide access to after-school care and summer camp for low-income families. They're requesting thirty thousand dollars.
Um, any comments or questions from the board? I think we got a pretty good explanation and we got, you know, multiple letters of support for this. So uh Scott?
I'm 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 in favor, I just wanted to, can we, can we get an idea of where what we've spent and what's left? Because I know there's one other, you know, item maybe coming up, which is the um, you know, accessibility at uh senior housing, make sure there's actually some money left over for that, too. So can Jody tell us what we, what we have left now?
So according to my math, uh, you have already spent seven ninety-nine, two eighty-nine tonight. Um, and if you spend this additional thirty, you will be at eight twenty-nine, two eighty-nine.
So that leaves us how much, Jody?
Oh.
Three hundred thousand.
We, we had a million, what did I say, a million?
A little over three hundred, I think.
You have, hold on, wait a minute. Oh, here's Dan, he's texting, he's gonna do it faster than me.
We had, we had a million three fifty-five, I think.
No, you had a million two oh six, one twenty
Two oh six, okay.
Forty-two cents. And so
Feeling Dan is gonna text Jody faster than any of us.
Hold on, I'm trying to beat him, wait a minute, give me a second here. Oops.
I didn't want to hear that.
Uh, I pressed the wrong key. Okay, I'm gonna rely on Dan. Okay, so your remaining balance for tonight would be three seventy-six, eight thirty-five and forty-two cents if you're thirty thousand, if you approve this thirty thousand.
Thanks, I'm good.
Anita?
Yeah, I just, I did have a question. I know we got a lot of support letters and um I think it's a really creative idea. Uh, but I just wanted to kind of understand a little bit about the background and how this idea came together. Um, and how this need was identified. I mean, it was, you just got phone calls of, from families who couldn't um, who weren't able to afford the summer camp and after-school care.
So, okay, so um I just checked Dan's math and he was correct.
What a surprise.
No. But um Jennifer.
Jennifer's, Clara's with us, so I'm gonna uh let her uh answer your question, Anita?
Yeah. Hey, Anita, um, so the request, basically, what we have a lot of families right now are are really struggling with um being able to afford summer camp as well as the after-school care program that are, that's being administered through our recreation department. Um, and being able to provide this type of resource to families um would not only behoove the children's mental health, but it'd also be able to be a place for kids to be in a structured environment while their kids, while their parents are either working or seeking jobs. Um, and though yesterday I'd actually spoken to Michelle and she had just gotten on the phone with um with um DCF. Um, again, they were dealing with a child in Westford and they really felt like being able to have this child participate um in the after-school, in the after-school program or in the camp could really be supportive to that child recognizing some of the, the um the the challenges that were going on with, within the family. And and this, and it's not just this particular family, there's, there's many families, unfortunately, that are really struggling at this time, and to be able to provide an an opportunity for a child just to get away from, you know, um just some of the frustrations or um just not having some of the same opportunities as other children and being in a stressful environment at home. Um, again, could, you know, benefit the mental health of our, of our children as well as be able to you know, have kids access our recreation program um that they haven't been able to do otherwise. Um, you know, and I I look at the senior center and, you know, one of the things that we work really hard on and we've been fortunate, you know, is to try to keep costs low so everybody has an opportunity to participate in the programs, because we know how beneficial they are and how important socialization is and having a purpose and being able to have new experience is um whether you're an an older adult or a young child. And just the peace of mind it can give a parent that's you know, really struggling to provide for a family financially, to be strong for a child, to, and a- as well as a father as well. Um, you should be able to maintain a household, um, you know. Mental health is not just about counseling and education, it's also being able to provide um supportive services and options. So that's kind of where this came from.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer, thanks for that background. And, no, um, I'm obviously very in support of it, and I just wanted to say that I feel like throughout this ARPA process, Jennifer, you've come up with a lot of innovative ideas and you've had a lot of creative ideas. So, you know, kudos to you, thank you so much for um bringing this idea, idea to us.
Well, Anita, I I can't take that credit because it was, it was a collaboration, again, with the, with the Health Department, with Brittany, um with Ray, um and of course with Michelle and Allison and just listening to, and to listen to residents. So, you know, yeah, so definitely a collaborative effort.
Well, thank you all. Right, we appreciate it. Um, anyway, okay, um, with that, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Uh, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right, um, so um, thank you all very much. Um, you know, as uh Jody and Dan uh just agreed, we've got three hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents left uh until uh we get our second uh round of funding. Um, so um we still have uh some that are uh on the back burner and that we have agreed to uh consider, and um as we have stated throughout the process, um, if uh there are other um uh requests out there, other needs out there, um, to continue to, please submit your requests to the town manager's office. And for everybody who worked on all of these tonight, thank you very much. Okay, um, old and new business. I believe that's you, Jody.
Yes, so yeah, in your last meeting, you received a letter from the Chumpsford Select Board. And they were uh asking you some questions about Newport material settlement because of the truck traffic issues. We did draft a letter for you to consider to respond, and it is in your packet, so we're looking for direction from you.
Anybody have any comments?
I thought the letter was good.
Tom, Scott?
Uh, first John, uh, so yeah, just checking, I, I thought it was a thoughtful response and a, and a well sort of research response to some specific questions, so nice, nice work for whoever on the town staff uh was was good enough to pull that together.
Jeff Morissette did it, so kudos to Jeff.
With a little help from Andrea and um counsel, so thank you.
Um, so Jody, do you, do you need um a motion for us to approve the letter? She's nodding yes. Um, is there, and second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and the next one is a request to support a regional application for Complete Neighborhoods Partnership Grant through Mass Housing Partnership to receive assistance in planning, community engagement and development activities in the Graniteville neighborhood.
Any comments or questions? Uh, John?
Uh, basically, what was the criteria for the selection of Graniteville? Do we have other needs in the town? Or is that the most pressing?
Uh, you will have to ask Joe, who I believe is on the meeting here.
Hi, Joe.
Um, so we did go through a bit of a process and plan the application together. Um, we collaborated with folks from MCOG and other communities uh to think about different neighborhoods and, and, you know, surrounding towns a- as well as Westford. Um, what ultimately led to the decision for Graniteville was some of the existing investments that are already getting made uh in the area map that was included in your packet, uh such as the the grant that we've already received for uh twelve North Main and the cleanup activities that'll happen over there. Um, the focus on the uh housing project over at thirty-five Town Farm, um that area over there. And the Complete Neighborhoods Partnership Program, uh really looking at ways to improve connectivity. Um, so you have some schools that are, you know, approximately a mile or so away from uh the twelve North Main, twelve North Main property uh that I mentioned there. Uh, some other properties that were identified in the grant application as areas that could be targeted for redevelopment, depending on who you hear from, properties that may or may not be on the market uh for, you know, potential redevelopment opportunity. Um, so again, looking at what resources are are around, um what the town is already making investments in, and how can we look to uh promote uh new housing and or better connections uh to other places already existing in Westford, and also uh areas that might be close to other uh retail or job opportunities.
It's probably a good, oh, go ahead.
No, 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 I just said thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, it's probably a good choice. I've had some complaints about some folks from Graniteville. I mean, some of them have said that they sometimes feel neglected, so this will take care of part of that, I hope.
Hopefully, it was an opportunity that came up rather quickly, it was a really short uh window to apply, so um, you know, we're hopeful.
Um, I have, uh, in the letter that you've drafted, um, I I will send it to you tomorrow, I have one, uh, there's I have one, uh, there's a one typo and one typographical um, correction. I think it's either in the second or third sentence, you say, "we believe" at the beginning of the sentence and at the end of the sentence. So um, I'll, I'll send it to you in the morning, okay?
Sure thing.
All right, um, so with that, is there a motion to um, uh, approve?
So approved, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, um, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Aye, thanks so much, Joe. Appreciate your work on this.
And the last item is a request from our town clerk to appoint election officers for terms expiring July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? And uh, all those in favor? I, I got that. Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Aye. Um, any board reports or updates? I don't see any. Okay, uh, town managers report, Jody.
Thank you. So the first is a request to approve the fiscal year twenty-three non-union pay classification plan.
Um, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And so next we have contracts, mass DEP for Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Funding for Recycling, Composting, Improving Air Quality and Reuse and Source Reduction Activities as requested by the Recycling Commission. The next one, there is a little typo here, but it's tie and bond for year four compliance with our municipal separate storm sewer system. MS four permit in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. Then we have purchase orders with FireTech and Safety of New England for Arm Cuss Fire Engine Rescue Tools in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four eighty-five, as requested by the Fire Department. Bound Tree Medical L S C for medical supplies, amount of fourteen thousand Fire Department Dennis K, Diesel Fuel in the amount of R P W and Nighthawks Track and Field for fiscal year twenty-two recreation programs in the amount of ten thousand, five oh eight as requested by the Recreation Department.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve uh, the contracts and purchase orders?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Hi.
Aye. Is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
Moved.
A second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, just raise your hands. Okay, and uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Westford. Good night, Westford. Everybody stay safe and be well.
Well, you especially there. Take care.
Good night.